Good evening and welcome to the January 25th, 2024 meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, the prayer and pledge will be led by Jamie Brogan, Vice President of Mission Integration with Christus Good Shepherd Health System. Christus played a significant role in today's Homeless Resource Day event and participated with the city of Longview. They were also a sponsor and participant in the recent Martin Luther King Jr. Weekend Activities. Please rise.
Grateful to be with you this evening and grateful to be part of the Homeless Resource Day this day. My job at Christus Good Shepherd is to help all of us know what our mission is, and that is to extend the healing ministry of Jesus Christ. And today, we got to extend it beyond the walls of our hospitals and clinics, and we could do that by collaborating with so many to meet our neighbors in need. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we gather before you this evening with our great city council who deliberates and leads our community, and we gather before you today in gratitude for this community coming together to serve some of our most vulnerable men, women, and children by bringing together the great resources of this city. Please guide us that we may do all that we do for your glory and for the common good, and especially to meet the needs of those who are in greatest need, for that is your will. We ask this all in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Tonight, we have a presentation of the status report on the Sixth Annual Homeless Resource Day. Ms. Laura Hill, Director of Grant and Human Services. Thank you, Laura.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council and Mr. McPhee. As Jamie said, today, we held our Sixth Annual Homeless Resource Day at the exhibit building, and since it was on the same day as council meeting, I thought you really needed an update, whether you wanted one or not. So, in 2017, the mayor's task force on homelessness was formed and included 31 different agencies that served the homeless, that were impacted by homelessness, and they came forth with a list of things they wanted to see the community achieve. And I just wanted to give you a brief update on where we were, where we are now. We are better at coordinating efforts to avoid duplication. We have made great strides in that area. We have created the service fair. Our first was held in 2018 at Teague Park at the Fire Training Center. We outgrew it immediately, and we moved to the exhibit building. Today, we grew to 64 agencies and 103 booths. We served about 400 of the homeless. We had a special bus route. We had 13 city departments participating. We provided medical testing. We had a separate veterans section that included federal, state, regional, county, and nonprofit-focused services just for veterans. We gave haircuts. I was going to thank Mr. Wade. He provided the chairs for us. We gave pet vaccinations, and we gave away hundreds of hygiene bags to the needy. We have moved the transit center from McGrill Plaza to the multimodal center. We created the Homeless Work Pilot Project through Public Works that continues today. We, in response to the need to focus on the mental health crisis that has been facing us for years, we created Glow, and that in 2021, that is continuing to grow and prosper, and we're truly trying to meet the needs of the public. And finally, to improve our overall appearance and aesthetics as a city, we have made significant accomplishments thanks to the comprehensive plan, which we are now updating, the 2018 citizen-supported bond, the efforts of Keep Longview Beautiful, 100 Acres of Heritage and Arts Longview, the creation of the city's interdepartmental problem property team, and the diligence of the Code Compliance Division with enforcement of the Property Maintenance Code, which you approved, and the substandard and dangerous building program also is supported by the city council. We definitely aren't done with working to make our homeless situation better, but we have made great strides. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you. Who would have thought we would be at this point from our humble little meeting at the library, the first time we met with the little task force, to see what we could do to help other people, and it has blossomed, not because of anything other than your leadership and your compassion and your love for people?
Well, thank you, Mayor.
So, thank you for your efforts and all those involved, because it does truly make a difference.
And it takes a city.
It does. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will now read a proclamation for Sex Trafficking Prevention Day. Whereas the Women's Center of East Texas has recognized that the mayor by proclamation recognized January 25th, 2024 as Sex Trafficking Prevention Day in the city of Longview, it is currently estimated that just in the state of Texas alone, there are over 313,000 victims of trafficking, including over 79,000 victims of child sex trafficking. Although the subject of sex trafficking can be difficult to talk about, it's important that we, as a community, educate ourselves on how to prevent and identify victims and work together with law enforcement to report any signs of this heinous crime. And the Women's Center of East Texas works to provide resource to support and care for victims of trafficking and knows how important it is to have the community join forces to help lower the number of future victims. So therefore, I, Mayor Mack, by authority vested as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim June 25th, 2024 as Sex Trafficking Prevention Day in Longview. Would please, Holly Bruce, CEO of the Women's Center of East Texas, and Amelia Heatherly, please come forward.
Thank you, ladies. As always, this is a difficult thing to talk about, because nobody wants to admit that it actually exists, but it exists in huge numbers, as you just heard me read. It's sad that there are people that would take advantage of others in this way, but it's a reality. And if we don't have groups such as yourselves doing what you can to help us and to become more aware of it, it will continue to grow. So, thank you for your efforts. If you help one person, that's one that you save. So, keep helping one person every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All the champs. Moving on to employee recognition. Tonight, for employee recognition, we are recognizing the police outreach service team normally called the post officers. The team officially began on January 1st, 2018, with two officers dedicated to homeless issues in the community. The goal of the team is to reduce homeless-related complaints by acting as a bridge between the homeless and the available appropriate services. The police outreach service team is modeled after successful programs in other communities such as Lubbock and Houston. The team currently consists of Officer Ronald Duncan and Officer Christopher Birdsong. Officer Birdsong joined the Longview Police Department in 2004 and served in a variety of roles in the department before joining the team. Officer Birdsong has developed a unique program tailored to Longview to work with homeless shelters, as well as mental health and substance abuse experts, to assist more than 150 individuals who receive substance abuse treatment. In 2021, he assisted 35. In '22, he assisted 47, and '23, he assisted 70 individuals. This assistance came from more than 1,500 individuals' contacts during the three-year period. Officer Duncan has served in law enforcement for 34 years and joined the Longview Post Department in 2012, Police Department 2012. Prior to being assigned to the post unit, Officer Duncan served in patrol, working in South and Central Longview. Officer Duncan is one of the original members of the post unit. We are sad to say that after more than three decades serving East Texas, Officer Duncan will retire February 1st. Thank you both for your excellent work and vital work, serving an often overlooked part of our community. Thank you very, very much. Please come forward.
Come on up, guys. Come on up.
How you doing, sir? Good to see you.
Thank you.
You can't retire. You just can't go. We need you too much. Thank you. Come on up, buddy. Chief, I'll let you talk just a minute, okay? I'm going to talk first, okay? Then you come and talk. Always go before the police. Here's the thing. When we started this post, whatever you want to call it, people thought we were absolutely crazy. They thought this is a waste of resources. How are you going to pay for it? What are you going to do with them? What are they going to do all day long? They're not going to have anything to do. They couldn't have been further from being wrong. These guys that have done this job for so many years, since its inception, they serve such a bridge. Here's your bridge. Homeless and jail. There's your bridge. And these guys keep them out of that. And that's the goal, is to help them help themselves when they don't have any place else to go. They direct them where they need to be. They give them compassion and care, and they lead them to the path they need to be on. And that is such a vital role in this community, because the only other alternative is, it's not good. We don't want, we want the best for these individuals, and you guys and those who have done this before want the same thing. And that's what's so important. So, your role in this, in this whole big scheme of things is so essential, and I'm so proud that we did this and continue to do this through Chief Boone. It's a service that just, it's just, it goes beyond words. So, thank you, guys, for your compassion and your care for individuals that need someone to look to, and they look to you guys. Thank you so much. Chief?
I just want to tell them both, thank you for what you do. Normally, at employee recognition, you get a pat on the back, and we take a picture, but y'all are worthy of definitely getting a certificate to go with that for everything you've done over the last year. And then also, Officer Duncan, even though I didn't really want to accept your retirement, there is a plaque to also honor your service. I want to give that here in front of everybody tonight. So, thank you both.
Thank you both. Thank you, guys. Keep up the good work. We need help. Keep it up. Moving on to citizen comment. I do have a couple of speaker cards. Evan Dolleve?
Evan Dolleve, 111 Mallard. I'm the Reverend Dr. Evan Dolleve, and I'm the Executive Director of the Greater Longview United Way, and for 77 years, we've been a beacon for programs in our community focusing on health, financial stability, and education. At GLU, we keep our ear to the ground with regards to the needs of our community and our nonprofit partners. At the United Way, we follow a very specific metric called ALIS. It means asset limited, income constrained, and employed. It's a better way of saying the working poor. We focus our time and our resources on nonprofits who are addressing and tackling the needs of this population, a population that is one flat tire or medical emergency away from being unhoused. It's no secret that Longview, as with other communities, has an unhoused population, but there can be a disconnect on how to offer meaningful and constructive help. As a native of Longview, I know that this community is giving and loving and gracious. And when faced with a challenge, we can take it head-on. I believe that the hand-up program that Chief Boone will speak to tonight does just that. We are proud of the United Way to stand with Longview PD and the city to begin to address the issues in our community. As a trusted partner with the city of Longview, as well as a resource hub for our community, we are thankful that Longview PD reached out to the Greater Longview United Way to be a spot where funds could be given. We take pride in our oversight, in our accountability, knowing that what is entrusted to us will be connected to programs and resources to where it matters the most. It will take all of us, from every district, every ISD, every background, to begin to address this issue, to continue what has already been done and built upon from the mayor's task force. GLU, the Greater Longview United Way, stands ready to connect the dots in our community so that Longview and the surrounding area can become the special community that we know it can be. Let's live united. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next speaker card is Anethia and Eric Hill.
Yes, sir. How you doing, council members? My issue today here, standing deals with a project-
Sir, just please just state your name and your address. Thank you, sir.
Eric Hill, 920 South 14th Street, Longview, Texas.
Perfect.
My issue is standing water. My mom's been involved with a lot. I made my 30-year fight with the city about a city project. 10 years ago, I believe, about 10 or 12 years ago, they came and did a project to try to relieve the standing water. However, they missed, they boggled the project. Now, coming, now in 2024, '23, they coming out to check out the water, to check out what they did. Well, they saying now that she has to, as the property owner, fix what they tore up. They want her to go back in and tear up her driveways, what they did, and they saying it's going to alleviate, alleviate the water standing. However, before the driveway was put in, it was the same problem, and then after the driveways has been put in, it's been the same problem. But the issue with hers is that she's trying to get them to resolve this issue, because they missed, they did this, so it shouldn't be on the property owner to have to fix this. And it's been going on for like the last 30 years. 20 years in, they give us some help, totally mismanaged the project. Now, 10 years later, they don't want to fix it. So, she's seeking help. She been to the city. She's basically going in a circle with this. She going back to the people who messed it up, and they going back and giving her excuses. So, she's trying to get some help as a lifelong citizen. So, if there is anything y'all could do to help her in this matter, then you would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you'll hang out after the meeting, someone will see you out there in a little while and see what they can do, okay? Thank you, sir. Dwayne, will you handle that? Thank you. Moving on to public safety update. Chief Boone?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. McPhee. First, want to cover some stats with you from our customer service results. This is through January. And right now, where we're sitting is 4.72 with our satisfaction with how you rate the officer that you interacted with, and for the dispatcher, 4.66. And again, this is on a five scale. And then how satisfied are you with the police department? It's 4.58. You'll also see some of the comments on there below that as well, and that's where, if anyone does anything beyond just the basic survey, want to fill in the word banks there, they can do so. And just again, a lot of great anecdotal compliments, and we try to make sure that we always send those out to the officers when it lists their names specifically. So, very, very thankful to see our officers doing such a good job out there on a daily basis. Also, on January 11th, we had leadership Longview came out and visited the new facility, and we had a great time with them, showing them the facility, and they also got to use the new simulator and had a SWAT demonstration as well, and played a little bit of Jeopardy with us. So, glad to, glad to have them at the new facility and look forward for many years to come. Also want to thank everyone for MLK Day Parade, the invitation that we had on Saturday, January 13th. So, myself and several command staff members came out there and were able to participate in the parade and had a good time. Thank you again. Also, January 15th, we've had a busy month for January. We had our first patrol actually moved over on January 15th, so we had our first briefings at the new facility, and our address actually changed from 302 West Cotton, 518 West South Street on January 15th. I think those guys are pretty happy about it.
[laughing]
And then, also on January 15th, snow day for most, not for everybody. But again, I'm very thankful that a lot of people stayed home, and that made things much, much better for everybody. I don't think we're out of this just yet, so we've had some snow in January. I feel like we may have some more in February, so I just wanted to cover some of this. And again, a lot of it's common sense, but just to reiterate it, possible, don't drive. Don't get on the roads if you don't have to when it's like that. Slow down. Maintain about three times your normal distance between other vehicles, because reactionary stuff, your reaction time might be the same, but the vehicle is not going to react the same. And also, use extra caution on bridges and so forth because of the extra icing. And if your vehicle starts to slide, ease off the gas. Don't slam on the brakes and steer into the skid. Also, it's already been talked about. I'm just thankful we were able to participate in the Homeless Outreach Day today, and again, thank you, Laura Hill, for all your work on that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Boone?
Thank you, sir.
Chief Stillman?
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on some things that have been happening in the fire department recently. And I apologize for my absence the last two council meetings, so on this first slide, if you'll allow me to back up a little bit, I'm going to back you up to December, because I think it would be unjust if I didn't publicly recognize the recipients of some of our awards at our annual awards bank, which I wasn't even not able to attend because of a family emergency, but I know several members of council and city administration attended, and we certainly appreciate that. But I want to publicly recognize these individuals for their accomplishment with the Longview Fire Department and the great job that they do to make us look great in this community every day. So, our Officer of the Year for 2023 was Captain Steve Dankers. Our firefighter of the year was fire driver Brad Conrato. Our paramedic of the year was firefighter/paramedic Nick Jones. Receiving the Fire Chiefs Award were Ashley Armstrong and Clay Kitchens. The Rookie of the Year was Fire Apprentice Josh Mosley. The Brotherhood Award went to fire driver Trent Montgomery, and the Sue Rogers Award went to our office, our office assistant Bianca Cummings. And again, these are the forward-leaning people that help represent the fire department and make us look good in this community every day, and I just appreciate the hard work that they always do and go and recognize for the most part for. So, thank you for allowing me to do that. Debris management. Man, who would have thought that a storm that happened in June of last year, seven months later, we would still be dealing with the debris left over from much of that storm? So, we've spent a lot of time since then, working collectively as the city, of trying to improve our processes for how we manage debris. And so, there's some shots of the compost site where a lot of this debris citywide ends up. And here we are seven months later, and we've barely made a dent in it. There's a lot of it out there. So, we have been working with Public Works, and the reason I'm talking about this is debris management actually is a part of recovery of emergency management, which I have a responsibility for. So, the fact that we've taken some steps to provide some debris management training here locally for not only our city staff, but our local partners, has been, has been fabulous. And I think it's really been an eye-opening process to help them better understand all the different ways and the caveats that we can hopefully better expedite the process of eliminating all of this debris. One of the things, I put a note on there that will be coming before you, probably at the next council meeting, is to consider a contract with debris management professionals that we can use in a time of need to help us really focus that effort and get this problem taken care of sooner, while at the same time allowing us the possibility of recouping some of the expense of getting rid of that debris because of a disaster declaration and state or federal aid if the situation warranted. So, just kind of want to give you a heads up about that. I'm excited about where this is headed. I think we're on a great pathway, and we're further down the road than we've been in many years. MG Foods, we have great partners in this community. We talk about it all the time. Shortly after the winter weather was going away and we were getting geared up for the rainy weather, they brought a lot of food by the fire stations to feed our crews that were on duty, and we certainly appreciate any, any offering like this of just that constant community support is vital to the morale in the fire department, and it supports our operations, and we're certainly glad to have partners like that in and around our community. I'll echo Ms. Hill and Chief Boone's sentiments on Homeless Resource Day. As a fire department, we're glad to be a part of this process. We're just one more spoke in that will that helps keep that happening. It is, it is a city-based effort, and we're so glad to get to be a part of that. Where it really affects the fire department is on the EMS side of the job. You mentioned earlier that homeless people have that pathway to jail. The other pathway is to the hospitals, which they put an undue burden on the hospitals if they don't go to jail. So, our firefighter medics are out there every day trying to intervene and cut that pathway off to get them to the resources that they need. Hardest of Longview had an event today honoring public safety. They had a great taco bar for lunch. They invited, we had several crews rotate through there, and again, this is just another great example of the community support for public safety that we're so honored to have here in Longview. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman?
I do.
Mr. Per-
Are we going to continue the burn out there at the compost?
I think, if the weather allows, I think so. I know that was an issue when the fire got out of control, and that's part of what this process is going to do, is help us get better at doing that on a more routine basis.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Glad to have you back. We're not at a consent agenda. Any items council like pull off for separate discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to an action item. Consider resolution authorizing the Longview Police Department to establish and implement the Hands Up Program, provide citizens with a streamlined method for donating to homeless service agencies of their choice. Chief Boone?
Again, Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. McPhee. So, as was mentioned this evening, Post began in January 2018 with a mission to help tackle the social problem of homelessness in the Longview area. And Post comes from task force recommendations that were created back in 2017, and it is also mentioned, really, is finding solutions that are somewhere between the streets and jail. And they really do work towards trying to find and formulate non-law enforcement solutions to problems. And I'd really be remiss to not mention Sergeant Keppke as well. We met the two post officers a little while ago, but Sergeant Keppke does quite a bit behind the scenes. He also takes care of our PAR unit as well, our police area representatives, and he does post and constantly working with those guys to try to come up with new ideas and create new things, and we'll present one of those to you this evening. Another, another recommendation that came from the task force in 2017 was, "We see a need to communicate to residents about the best way to help the homeless population." And with that, how do you bridge those gaps? Well, the police department has a vision to assist with this recommendation by providing a hand-up opportunity rather than a hand-out with council approval. So, kind of looking at other examples and trying to get some ideas, kind of on a national basis, you'll see the largest picture there is actually from a website of Douglas, Colorado, where you'll see a sign very similar to the one I'm showing up here at the front. And from there, it actually has an ability to go to their website and donate funds for charitable individuals or groups that are working towards homeless situations. So, again, it's bridging that gap between those that are wanting the help and those that are there trying to do the help and do the work. Another example is a sign there from Maryland, if you can read that. Basically, it says, "It's okay to say no to panhandlers. Give to many, not just one. Scan and support local nonprofits." And with that, it's got a QR code that you can scan, and also it has a 211 for more information. And if you want to look a little bit closer to home, you'll see both examples from Arlington and from McKinney, Texas. And I'm just going to steal a little bit from McKinney on that, because they actually sum it up the best. When it's talking about giving in a way that goes to charitable organizations working towards homeless issues and problems, you actually offer long-term solutions, and you provide basic needs like food, shelter, and healthcare. Whereas, on the panhandling side, and somebody just gives money to somebody that's on the street corner, it has the potential to support potential drug use and alcohol dependencies, and it keeps people on the streets. That really reminds me of the old adage about, you know, give a person a fish, you fed him once for the day, but if you teach them how to fish, you fed them for a lifetime. I think we have a lot of organizations here in town trying to figure out how to feed people for a lifetime. And you'll see on this slide here, there's another example of the sign for everybody to see, but it's right here in the, in person as well. And this is not, this is a mock webpage right now, what this could look like. And so far, I've not been endorsed to use anybody as far as charitable organizations, or we haven't gotten the far of actually doing the paperwork and partnering up yet, but this is just the potential of what it could look like as our local organizations come on board. But this is truly, it's voluntary for everyone involved, nothing that we're governing to anyone. And this is for businesses, if they want to have the sign. This is for the charitable- Uh, this is for the charitable, charitable organizations if they want to participate, and it's for the people that choose to donate. We're just asking that instead of having, handing somebody a, a five-dollar bill on the street corner, let's put that money to the resources and use it a better way. And with that, we think that the, uh, the dollars need to be with organizations that are working here locally and trying to help solve local problems with local solutions. It truly is using local dollars to help local organizations, helping local people. So, the signs, this will be up to businesses and charitable organizations if they want to purchase them. The signs, just to cover our costs from Public Works, would be at forty dollars each, and from there, you can hang it up, and it'll have the QR code, and from there, it goes through our website. With it going through our website, that's just to give it legitimacy, and we've basically vet the organizations that are part of this, and then from there, whether it's an independent QR code for whatever charitable organization, or if there's a list when you go to that website, you click from there and donate the money where you want it to go. So, that is our, that is our plan for Hand Up. Again, it's local dollars for our local organizations, helping local people, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Chief Boone?
Not a question, Chief, just a, a, a comment. Thank you for innovation, the, the forward thinking on something of this nature to, uh, once again, help any way that we can.
Yes, sir.
I think that everything that we do with the goodness in our hearts in that direction is going to end up being good, and that's, that's all you can ask for. So, thank you for your leadership and your department's willingness to participate, and the community hope will, will get on board with this and, and see that there is a better way.
Yes, sir.
We've, we've seen since two thousand seventeen when we started this, the worst thing you could do is hand them the dollar bill. That's the worst thing you can do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we know it, we see it, we just need to practice it. So, thank you for your, uh, your leadership on this, Chief. Thank you so much.
With that, we are to items of community interest.
Do we need an action item on that?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do need action on that. We got to approve this.
Move approved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just took it for granted. Sorry about that, guys. Thank you all. We're now to items of community interest.
I would like you to excuse Mr. Nu, uh, Nu Stad and Mr. Wade.
We have a motion to excuse Mr. Nu Stad and Mr. Wade. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We will now start with you, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, behalf of a sincere thanks to Development Services and Environmental Health, uh, I'm pleased to announce that we have a great addition to our city called Tia Juanitas of Longview. If you haven't been there yet, it's worth it. So, it's, uh, with great pleasure, and it really took a lot of help from the people in Development Services, Environmental Health. I mean, it was, it was a massive undertaking, so thank you to those folks. Uh, let's see here, Pine Trees having a, the high school, the twenty-second had the high school, had the Texas Education Agency Career and Technical Education Office in for a tour and walkthrough, so we're getting some exposure around the state there. Uh, the Pirates of the Pines Educational Foundation will be having their annual banquet on Saturday, the tenth, at the Reserve. Tickets can be, uh, purchased by contacting them. The last item, uh, February the first, I believe, which is next Thursday, uh, the East Texas Food Bank's in conjunction with Gretna Global Methodist Church, uh, will be passing out free grocery items available. They actually start eleven to one, but if anybody in the community would like to help them and, uh, come on out about ten o'clock when they start packing, putting things together, uh, they do it twice a month, and they are kind of like the post office, Mayor, rain, snow, sleet, hail, they don't care, they go. And they're, they're hosting about four hundred families per day of each of those days in the month. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Naughty?
I was just instructed to pull my mic down, so you guys. Thank you. Thank you. I was planning on doing it. Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just want to mention this past, uh, weekend and say thank you to Dietrich and the MLK Committee and to all staff and everyone involved. Uh, we had a, a great MLK weekend from beginning to end, from the concert, which was, uh, a, a powerhouse band was there. They, they were awesome. Uh, the parade, uh, which I was honored to serve as the grand marshal in the parade. Also, the humanitarian award where I received the recipient, so I had an awesome weekend as well. And, um, to those who braved the storm to walk in the, uh, MLK march from rotten to Mount Olive, uh, for all those that participated, I think, uh, a great time was had by all, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naughty, and job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Mack.
Uh-huh. Uh, Ms. Campbell?
The Super Bowl of Caring is underway, and it's almost over. It ends on February fourth, so we'd really like, or I would really like to encourage you to please, um, get some canned food items, some non-perishables, and they really have a need for canned meat. So, tuna, spam, any sort of canned meat, please donate that to Longview Community Ministries, um, who, if you have not heard, has also taken the role of the, um, Dream Center, and they are now going to be distributing food solely, um, so if you could please support them, and they support those in our community. Um, as you have heard, human trafficking is something that affects us all. It's a heinous crime. Um, the free public event, Breaking the Chains Human Trafficking Seminar, has been rescheduled to Wednesday, January seventeenth, um, from nine AM to five PM. So, we'd really like to encourage all of you guys to go to, um, see what you can do to help combat that in our community. And a huge congratulations to the Spring Hill Junior High students who competed at the UIL Academic Districts Meet. Um, they won first place overall in district. Um, and I'd also like to thank everyone, um, that organized the MLK, um, events this weekend. Thank you to the police department for letting me, um, walk with you guys, and, uh, just thank you, everybody, for celebrating the legacy of Martin Ju, uh, sorry, y'all. MLK Junior, thank you.
Mr. Pertle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. McPhee? The Passport Program, the city of Longview, Visit Longview, and Arts Longview challenge you to attend our great events, performances, museums, and destinations throughout the year with the new twenty and twenty-four Passport Challenge. Earn a stamp on your passport at each event or destination, and you'll be entered into a drawing to win great Longview-themed prizes the end of the year. Learn more at visitlongviewtexas.com/challenge. Did I say that right? Twenty and twenty-four, okay. I mean, sure. Book sale. The Friends of Longview Public Library will host their book sale fundraiser from Wednesday, January thirty-first to Friday, February the second. To learn more, visit longviewtexas.gov/library. And it's time for my final round of our annual scholarship contest. Graduating seniors from Hallsville, Longview, Pine Tree, and Spring Hill ISD can enter during the month of February. For full information and to apply, visit longviewtexas.gov/scholarships.
This has been a special thing for me to do since I've become the mayor, and I look forward to my last, um, reading of what our youth see as, uh, through their eyes, how I see things differently sometimes. So, it's good to get a viewpoint from a different perspective, and I look forward to having their essays and evaluatedness. So, uh, Richard kept asking me this week, what's the question?